Mr. Roy, can you call the board?
Chairman Cassella.
Here.
Commissioner Hogan.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Newt.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
G P.
Here.
Assistant Chief Lee.
We rise for the pledge. So, thanks everyone for coming tonight. Before we get started, I want to make a little bit of an announcement. I want to make sure we leave the doors clear. Bathrooms are up the stairs and down the hall. I see there's a lot of people here. I'm sure people want to speak. I'm hoping we keep it respectful and there's no disruptions. And we'll move on with the meeting and we'll get to the portion of the meeting that I think y'all want to get to. So. We can get started with Mr. Chairman. Like there is a motion, we accept the December fifth regularly minutes estimated. A motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining from that.
Okay. Motion passes with one extension.
Mr. Chairman. I made the motion, we accept the minutes for the December twelfth, twenty twenty four special meeting. That circulate.
Second. Second. Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Same.
Motion passes with one extension. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we pass paying the bills forty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and six cents.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes. So, on to committee reports. Item A, Secretary's report.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I have a leave of absence request from Andrew Phillips. We'll be voting on later. I also have a letter from the chief about hiring in advance of upcoming vacancies. And third, I have an F O I request from a citizen of the town.
Okay. Thank you. Item B, Chief's report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I was trying to perky. The department has seen some significant increase in activity recently. Notably, two significant fires requiring extensive mutual aid assistance. One on Twenty-Eight Aircraft Road with two civilians being rescued from a third floor. The other on the morning after Christmas on Howard Ave. All personnel of all scenes, both self and mutually partners, were heavily under challenging conditions. The fire department said other fire responses as well, including a fire on Center Street. Issue with the Y M C H, Y M C H Navy. I apologize, I do speak fast. And another fire involving combustible metals and dust at Yard Metals. Following the fire at Howard Ave, the department cannot stress enough the importance of all occupancies having working smoke alarms and carbon monoxide alarms. The department does have a community risk reduction program consisting of voluntary home safety inspections and/or installation inspection of battery, tower, smoke, and carbon monoxide alarms. These can be scheduled with our administrative assistant, as well as any other administrative questions or inquiries can be directed to our main administrative phone number, eight six zero six two one three two zero two, expansion eight one zero zero, or eight one three three. Just an update on some membership. Two members from Company One have completed firefighter one and are now inter-qualified firefighters. Additionally, another member from Company One who joined the department already having firefighter one has completed the probationary program and is inter-qualified as well. We have seven new additional volunteers, both from Company One and Company Two, starting a combined firefighter one firefighter two program this spring. That'll run from middle of February towards the end of June. They're actually combining both programs. It could be a little bit more expeditious course in terms of training. And we've lost my place, I apologize. Well, we have likelihood of addition of another volunteer as well. Just this week alone, we've received three applications for volunteer firefighters. Conversely, we've had six volunteers leave the department, either resign or retire since July. And as we hold on tonight, one has recently requested a one-year leave of absence. Community services pieces, the Y M C A annual polar plunge is scheduled for February twenty-second. Company One will be providing a standby crew as they have done for years. And we'll get to that under old business as well for this last week. As requested by the board, we reviewed our operating budget a little closer with respect to the overtime line. We are able to trim a little more off in primarily non-contractual areas such as important detail assignments. And that should have a little impact on department operations going forward. That is my report.
Thank you. Item C, Assistant Chief's report.
Good evening and happy new year. For Fire Marshal's report, the month of December twenty twenty-four, there were fifty-eight Fire Marshal inspections, three C R R home inspections, two hundred and fifty-one reports to the state Fire Marshal. There were five hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars in damage to property, thirty-five thousand dollars in damage to property, other properties, six hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars in total damages. The December twenty twenty-four incident has been provided to you tonight. And then moving on to the training report for the fourth quarter. Year-end totals for the training division will be six thousand four hundred and fifty-seven training events for a total of fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty hours of training. Certification programs included firefighter one and two, E M T, firefighter, and our Grand Family Aerial Operator Program. There's been improvements to the driver training programs, created for ten or two and whole aerial devices. Current training programs are working well and are well received by our members. Minor enhancements are always ongoing. New programs have been developed and will be implemented for the twenty twenty-five year, including foster development, technical rescue disciplines. And the fourth quarter training report was in your packets. The twenty twenty-four annual training report was provided also tonight. And then the safety committee for the fourth quarter of twenty-four, the committee met on December sixteenth. The committee is researching some additional safety features for our two U T Vs. And they're working on updating the station fitness equipment with a plan. And their next meeting is scheduled for February tenth of twenty twenty-five. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Moving on to old business.
Yes, how would you like to proceed with this? You had a discussion last meeting in the budget workshop? And if you still want to go line by line, or do you just want to?
Well, I think basically, I just want to address where we were able to, you know, kind of put a fine point on whatever line items. I believe it's really just the overtime with maybe a few other small things.
Yeah, so in regards to the overtime, that was pretty much where the pencil got sharpened. I was originally requesting about forty-four detail assignments. That's to bring in op members in op duty to handle certain things like dispatch delays on certain work projects or apparatus committees as well. So I trimmed that down by ten individual incidents as well. I did take out, we initially had a plan in there for rope training, for four-hour rope training drill. Mostly on-duty shifts are doing that on-duty. So we were able to accomplish those tasks on these, we removed that as well. Of course, we'll continue to monitor that, especially on the training piece of it. And then lastly, CPR recertification. We no longer pay over time for that as well as in-house. We actually partner with the Health Department as well as our deputy chief of emergency and our executive assistants and our CPR instructors. Also, we're able to bring that in-house and be able to trim that line down a little bit.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for the chief on this, or?
So if you remember, the initial proposal was one point seven seven percent increase over last year. About, you know, and we were able to get that down to just under one percent, point nine five percent. About as fair a balance as I can give.
Yeah, so I just want to say that I appreciate the effort. I think going forward with the additional personnel that we're going to recommend adding, you know, putting this budget forward is going to help us achieve some of our goals that we have within the department. Item B is program additions.
Okay, program additions, no changes, no, sir. The first is the addition of four additional firefighters. Place one additional firefighter on each shift. You see the overall cost there, in fact, in terms of one-time cost for training. If you kind of hire, kind of get almost eight thousand, around eight thousand dollars to have on a new turnout here. So those are one-time costs. But the additional salary benefit piece equates to just under four hundred thousand dollars, three ninety-four seven twenty-seven for that recommendation. And lastly, is the additional firefighter inspector. We have dual role firefighters inspectors. They primarily keep, maintain most of their role in the inspection bureau, doing plan reviews, code enforcement, fire investigations, et cetera. We look at the cost of that for the increased salary benefits piece at about one fifty-six nine thirty-four. But as I did mention, in that piece, we do have a fee review schedule. That's an ordinance in town, and we collect revenue on that. So as of two days ago, or three days ago, at thirty, that increase, that revenue income was just over, just under a hundred, ten thousand dollars. So I mean, there is a potential offset there, but that's a budget piece that's out of my hands and out of ours specifically, so letting that go down town.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions on the program additions? Chief, can you explain how the Safer Grant works to a basic level of community? That don't understand how it works or not familiar with it?
I can give you the story perspective. The most funding opportunity for the next round has not come out yet. I don't anticipate it to change. However, the Safer Grant is a program that's been changing continuously since I've been involved with the grant writing. Currently, it provides, first, better benefits, salary benefits for awarded amount of people. Put it in for three years at the one hundred percent before you speak to the town, we have to pick up portions of it year after year. I would say, sorry, I would say two thousand twelve was a five-year program that was tiered down, acquiring now, it's three years at a hundred percent. Again, for both salaries and benefits for that position. We anticipate the grant award or grant application to open up around February, maybe in March. It's the typical timeline. Awards have to be announced by September thirtieth, that's the end of the federal fiscal year. So if you look at how we were successful in twenty-one, twenty-two, we were awarded in August, we were able to get personnel onboard, interview and train into the academy where they are onboard by some time before the academy ended at the academy. That spring, when they were onboard and in service, let's call it eighteen months of the data application. One thing I will state about the Safer Grant is it's not a guarantee. And other fire professionals in this room that have applied and looked at it as well. So again, it's a gamble, but I think it's a gamble worth taking on our end.
And we have had success in the past.
We've actually been awarded three in the past. Only accepted the most recent one. Won't get into that history of that, but we were awarded two thousand twelve, two thousand eighteen for the same request we had in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. So we have very talented individuals that help craft our grants. We've been very, very successful in the grant world. I'm hopeful that this is the path that the commission and the town want to take and will have continued successfully.
And so the plan is the Safer Grant will be for three individuals and the town will commit to one individual.
Yes, that would be my preferred, to put it, whatever it is, known to me, pretty blunt. Just basically to show the town's got a little skin in the game, that we are also investing. Obviously, the town, you know, last grant projected forward to keep those personnel as well. So they have skin in the game when they get filled, but it does read better in the application process, in my opinion.
So, in your experience, that's, that increases our odds of receiving.
It looks better to the peer of yours as being a peer, had been sitting, peer of you panels in the past. You know, when the town shows a commitment to help address its own needs and not just relying on the federal government, it reads better than it is.
So there's been some concern out there that when the three-year period that the Safer Grant covers is over, that, you know, there's a possibility of these individuals being laid off. In your experience, have you seen that?
Not here in town. You know, working with the previous fire chief, as well as the previous town manager, we were able to, you know, and the town council in part finance. I, you know, we're missing, if I didn't mention that, came up with a plan for to maintain those positions after the federal funding elapsed, so.
And so it's, it's, it's my impression that as soon as we hire these people, we start funding them. And even though, even though their compensation is subsidized by the grant, we put that money in contingency on the town side.
I believe that's the process that they do, they put it in.
So from day one, we start funding these employees.
Yes, I thought every quarter I request the federal reimbursement. Get the information from payroll, get that back, and that goes into whatever they're.
And over the course of the first three years of employment, the town is putting money in contingency to help carry their employment forward.
Yes, because that's my knowledge, that's how it's.
Okay. So that's what we do to keep from running into this fiscal cliff that people talk about, or the, the, the concern that we'll get the money from the federal government and then we won't be able to fund it. So that's, that's how that basically works.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Sure.
Once we, if we get a Safer Grant for three firefighters and we're in that three-year period, does that mean we are locked out from applying again? Should our needs?
I wouldn't say it's locked out, but I looked at this previously and it's talking to people in the grant director. It's not recommended, it's recommended you successfully complete the one grant program. And if you have additional needs, then reapply instead of running on currently. That was the recommendation from the staff that I contacted.
Okay, any other questions? So, next item, Board of Fire Commission comments and communications. Anyone?
I just wanted to say in regards to the recruitment and retention committee, that I spoke with Barbara Coleman Peffler from Southington, D A. And we're going to start working together with the chamber to bring in the business community. So she wants to go into more detail and we suggested she attended a committee meeting of the recruitment and retention to go through and put together an action plan. But she was excited and said the business community supports the firefighters and they want to be involved.
Anyone else? I just, I have a general statement and, you know, whoever here is familiar with the local social media. I put out a statement on social media and I just kind of wanted to go over that. For anyone who didn't see it, who isn't, you know, who doesn't use social media or isn't interested in it. As, as the chair, I made a general statement with basically what our position is as, as a commission. And this is basically the statement. You know, I want to let all interested parties know that the commission does not, has not, and will not support the reduction of staffing or services of the Southington P D, Fire Department, I'm sorry. The commission remains steadfast in support of our department, is committed to our mission of providing the tools and resources needed for the continued success of the department. The commission, with its former chairman, has been planning for six months or more to add staffing. And part of that is this Safer Grant and gaining approval to ask for the Safer Grant. Not really gaining approval, but support. We want to know what people think and how to go about adding the needed staff. We collaborate with the chief. The chief collaborates with his people and we recognize the need. So, as the new chair, I plan to continue our mission. We have a proposal in place to hire four firefighters using the Safer Grant, as the chief said. Three will be paid by the grant and one will be paid completely by the town. That is the recommendation we're going to send forward from this commission. We've received approval for the early hire of two firefighters to take care of gaps that will be created by people who are planned to retire this year. So we've, we have the communication of the, we've communicated with the town manager and we have his support to go ahead and get some early hires in. So that the transition will be seamless and will have the people, you know, moved along in the process so that we can fill the gaps that happened when people retire. The budget we're proposing, as, as the chief said, there's, there's no cuts in the budget. You know, there's a slight increase over, over last year's spending. And if you go line by line, the, the salary line item and the overtime line items have either been slightly increased or have stayed the level. So there's no cut there. We're committed to public safety. This commission is committed to public safety. That's why we're here, that's why we're involved. We're thankful to our first responders for their service and, you know, all the service they provide. And that's really all I have. Next item is new business. Item A is action on the operating budget.
I make a motion, like, is this one here?
That's a prerogative. Right now, this is, this is.
Yeah, so. Okay, so that's a valid question. The operating budget that you put forward, does it have provisions for all five of the program additions?
It does not, so historically, the operating budget goes through as a main, level main energy service. The program additions are a separate permission to the town manager's office. And if it's approved, then the town manager forthby, and it's the town council, and that gets adjusted or bottom line, okay? So we maintain our existing services and that gets inserted, definitely, because it could, it could possibly go to, pass through the board and go to the town manager, et cetera, and not be included in the town's budget. So that's why we do it separately.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we make a motion to accept this?
Yes.
Is this included in this? She said no.
It is not, no.
So how do we make a motion?
We make a motion on the operating budget as presented, and then you make a motion to accept the program addition. That's there, that's.
Can I make a motion to accept the operating budget as presented?
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? Do you want to use a number for your motion?
In the amount of somebody else. Five eight five, five eight five one nine two seven.
Okay.
There's a lot of numbers that I want to.
So we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Can we do a roll call, though? Ms. Roy?
Commissioner Cassella?
Yes.
Commissioner Hogan? Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Newt?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next up is action on program additions.
So I make a motion to accept the program additions in the amount of three hundred and ninety-four thousand seven twenty-seven.
Do we have a second? Second. Any discussion?
I got it. Just.
amend the motion?
Just a quick question and just procedural. So the plan is to go for, apply for a Safer Grant for three and one for the regular budget. My recommendation would be to change, make an amendment to the program addition to be submitted for one individual, one firefighting position. Because that'll be determined, change to the next fiscal year's budgets. I'd recommend that I take that down to four positions and down to one, and I can recalculate those numbers and get it up there, but you just.
Okay.
amend it, instead of four new firefighting positions, one new firefighting position and a program addition for fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six.
Okay, I'll amend it in that regard, but I want to make sure that as we pass this budget, we're going to be seeking approval from the town council to be able to apply for the grant. And we have the town council addresses at their next meeting.
So, so.
I amend this here.
Okay, so now it's the discussion portion, and I have a question. We have two items, but we have one motion. Is that correct? Two items on the program additions?
There are two, there are two separate items.
Yeah.
And we didn't break them off.
Right, so it's a total really of five. Is that correct?
Five, well, five positions, yes, but on the firefighter piece, you know, instead of the program addition, putting in for four, I adjust the numbers tomorrow before I submit my budget to the town manager for one.
Okay.
And then it will be, it will be down to two, for fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six.
So you're looking for two additions, you're looking to take on that firefighter and an inspector?
Correct, yes.
Right. So if we don't have, can we break those two out? Can we vote separately on each program addition?
He's in a backseat somewhere. Mr. Town Manager? Is he in?
I think he's in the background.
Yes. Yes, okay.
Okay. So, I'm sorry for the confusion, but can we amend the motion again? Or, or the motion can stand, correct?
The motion can stand.
Because we're only asking for one.
Yeah.
Okay, so, any other discussion?
So to clarify, I'm making a motion to accept the program additions of the one firefighter, along with the request to the town to go forward with the Safer Grant for three. That's my motion.
Yes, and then you can take the second position.
Right. So I second that, okay. And, and, yes, you can come.
And it's clear that these are new positions and not replacement of retiring people, correct?
Correct. And I have one other thing. We're doing this under the assumption that there will be, these potential four firefighters will be to add additional personnel on existing shifts.
Correct, yes.
There will be no additional shifts and there'll be no increase in services.
Yes, the plan for these initial four, incremental change to get there, once these four individuals are onboard online, my plan would be to staff the ladder truck at ten quarters for four, twenty-four seven, for a majority of the time that the truck rolls out the door.
Okay. Okay, so I'm fine with that. And we want to call the roll again?
Chairman Cassella?
Yes.
Commissioner Hogan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher? Yes. Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. So, yeah, so I'd like to, the second program addition was for an additional fire inspector. Do you have the figure in there? I'm sure, I'm sure the chief does.
Yeah, for the assumption of benefits is one fifty-six nine thirty-four. I include the benefits piece, again, that's on the town side, not on our budget side. So that, the benefits will be reflected in our budget if it passes. But I think it's a fair assessment to throw that number, have that number public facing.
Okay. Maybe we'll, can we? Okay, maybe we should, we, put a budget forward to hire one fire inspector?
I may ask you to amend that to firefighter inspector.
Okay, firefighter inspector, sorry.
We just have two sort of classifications on this.
We have a motion and a second, uh, do we have a second? Is there a second out? No second? Okay, so motion does not pass. Failed for lack of a second, thank you. Next item is Board of Fire Commission comments and communications. Oh, we already did that, I'm sorry. So, now, we're on to, item C.
I made a motion to accept the leave of absence. And this is, this is the second phase of course.
Motion?
Yeah, Andrew Fenn.
I have a motion and a second, any, any questions or comments? Hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, so, next item is communication from firefighters and the public. So, what I'd like to do is have you state your name and your address. We're going to limit comments to town residents and town taxpayers and members of the Department of Southern.
Edwin Crandall, I live at twenty-seven Loomis Road in Bolton, Connecticut. I'm the president of the International Association of Firefighters Local Two-O-three-Three. Commissioners, minutes ago, your board chose to stand for public safety, for firefighter safety, and your commitment to both by refusing to reduce service levels to our community. The two primary options presented to you at the December twelfth meeting, what Chief Heath effectively described as the least bad of all the bad options, would indeed have reduced service levels and increased the risk to our members and the public we're sworn to protect. Local Two-O-three-Three thanks you for your dedication to maintain the current service levels as we combat the ongoing staffing challenges we face. Local Two-O-three-Three has an outstanding working relationship with Chief Heath and Assistant Chief Lee, and with our volunteer brother and sister firefighters within the Soullington Fire Department. As we work with board members while collectively navigating this difficult period, it is clear to us we have the same working relationship with you. We place tremendous value in those relationships, without them, SFD would falter. You, the department's civilian oversight board, are the voice of the SFD within town government. That role, in concert with Chief Heath and Assistant Chief Lee's fire service expertise, are critical in conveying to town leaders the needs of this department. All of us share the burden and responsibility of providing successful all-hazard protection to our citizens and those who pass through this community. It is time for us all to look forward to the continuing staffing needs of this department. An honest look at where we are today reveals that maintaining this service level is just a stopgap. Station three is still empty nights and weekends. Truck one can still respond with only a driver and officer. The retirement of senior leadership is still in the very near future. Our volunteer ranks continue to shrink. In every corner of town, growth is happening. Your decision tonight maintains a service level that, while it increased with the daytime engine three years ago at Station Three, it remains at the same night and weekend minimum staffing level we have been at since nineteen ninety-eight. It is an obvious fact that our department must grow to match the town if we are to fulfill our responsibility to protect it. SFD cannot spend another thirty years at late nineteen ninety staffing levels. Soullington is an amazing community, and it is no surprise that its growth matches its potential. Local Two-O-three-Three looks forward to continuing the honest conversation necessary to provide the level of all-hazard protection that our citizens both demand and deserve. Thank you very much.
I have a few things to say. My name is Kathleen LaFores. I live at one sixty-one Spring Road in Plansville for forty-three years. I first asked all of you, the commission members, have you ever had a fire at your house? Have any of you had a fire at your house? I can't hear you.
This is the public comment portion, it'll be known back and forth.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was just curious, because only if someone has ever had a fire in their home, would they ever really know what it's, what it's like. Five years ago, today, five years ago, today happens to be five years ago that our garage caught fire and almost consumed our house if it was not for the brave men and women of the Soullington Fire Department. I woke up at one AM on January second, twenty twenty, to an inferno of our detached garage. There was no smoke alarm because the garage was detached. There was fifty years worth of things in it, and I tell you, it burned very quickly. I have never been so terrified in my life. My husband and I fled the house, and our good neighbors gave us comfort while all the resources Soullington had came out and put the fire out and saved our house. Our house did catch on fire too, but thank God, everything they did, we were able to not have to leave our home, and it was saved because of what they did. I'm so grateful to this very day. No one was hurt, and our house was saved. In the last ten years, we've had so much growth in this town. I have seventeen large houses and a forty-unit apartment complex that was built behind our home alone, and a lot more coming. And have you seen how much was added on to the Alzheimer's Center on South Main Street? There's a lot of elderly people that are living here. If there's a major problem there, who's, who's going to come if nobody's there, especially in the night? One o'clock in the morning, I was sound asleep, and the only thing that woke me up was the roar of the fire. You have no idea how terrifying that is to be woken up by the sound of a fire. I do. And if it wasn't for all these wonderful people that I am so grateful for, I am alive today, and my husband and I are alive today, and our pets too. And we have our home that we didn't have to rebuild and be in a muckel for six months. You, you have no idea until you've gone through something like that. So, I am pleading, I have been here for forty-three years, I came from Terryville to come here for a better life. And they're building, 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 I'm hearing there's like maybe two hundred apartments that are going to come on Curtis Street. You have to provide enough services for everybody, not just for the few elite people that, you know. Everybody needs to get the same services as everybody else, everybody. You've got to cover the whole town, you can't just cover parts of it. And especially in the night, you know, you have no idea what it's like until you've been through something like I've been through. And I'm here to try to make people understand, and the town council, everybody, the finance committee, town council, all your committees. I mean, I had the deal with planning and zoning ten years ago, and it's the worst nightmare, I don't know what was worse than nightmare, the nightmare of my father, or the nightmare of having to deal with the town. But I only came here today to try to, uh, tell the people of this town and the people who run the town that we are important, and our lives are important. And don't put us on a number. What's the number of a life, what's the number of any of your loved ones' lives? Okay, that's about all I have to say, I think I wasted enough of everybody's time. But think about what it would be like if you were sound asleep and you woke up to a fire, and who's going to help you? And you want somebody to be there, and I'm grateful to everybody who works in first responding. My father was saved on Christmas night by a first responding paramedic team, and I'm so grateful for our, everybody that's a first responder, because it's the hardest job that anybody will ever have, whether you're paid or volunteer. But this town needs to step up and pay the money, my God, what is wrong with you people?
Thanks for your comments. Before you start, I want to remind everyone, we're going to allow four minutes for everyone to speak.
I don't speak that fast, so, but I'll try. Rick Hart, one three nine Summit Street, Plansville. I think it's a great incremental step to hire four firefighters to offset some of the issues that are plaguing the, the city of Soullington. But echoes, that is not enough to adequately staff the fire department to national standards. I don't believe that the city of Soullington's fire department is compliant with NFPA seventeen twenty at any time that they respond to a fire. I know Bristol, Meriden, and New Britain respond automatically to any reported working structure fire at a cost of approximately fifteen hundred to five thousand dollars per department, per call. I know for a fact that the city of Bristol responded fifteen times to the city of Soullington in mutual aid because the lack of staffing. Now, I know the penny pinchers will say, that's a great, great way to offset the cost of personnel. But unfortunately, on Howard Avenue, we're here tonight advocating for additional personnel as opposed to planning a line-of-duty funeral for two firefighters. To call a May Day in fire service is the absolute last resort, and to have the two people that had a call on May Day is absolutely reprehensible. The Board of Fire Commissioners, the Board of Finance, and the City Council are explicitly responsible for that having to happen because of the lack of funding their fire department. Now, I know it was put out on social media that there are thirty-seven firefighters out from thirty-one. While factually correct, it doesn't tell the true story of seven firefighters on shift that can drop down to six. And we all know that fires only occur during daylight hours, we don't have fires at night. So, having Station Three vacated leaves the south end of town absolutely in good hands. As far as the Safer Grant is concerned, in twenty twenty-three, there were two thousand one hundred and ninety-one Safer Grant applications submitted to FEMA. Ninety were approved for hiring, and another hundred for recruitment and retention. That's a nine percent return on your investment. What happens if you don't get the Safer Grant? Are you just going to hire one? Which makes absolutely no sense, because you're going to, you're going to overbalance one shift, and the other two shifts, uh, the other three shifts are not going to have adequate staffing. You have to look at the staffing models of departments that are similar to the town of Soullington. Unfortunately, in this day and age, you can't count on volunteerism anymore. People are working two jobs, the people that do show up for, as volunteers, God bless them, but they're dwindling. You have to hire a minimum of twelve firefighters to make a dent in what you need as for adequate shift strength. That would only staff one engine, and even that isn't compliant with the NFPA, which calls for four firefighters on an engine. You guys have to get your collective heads out of the sand and realize that it's not if it happens, it's when it happens, it's going to happen. We're going to have a tragedy where the right person is going to be adversely affected by the low staffing model that the Soullington Fire Department has. And the money that the town will have to pay in restitution far outweighs the amount of money that the cost of the personnel would, uh, would be to the town. So, with that, I would advocate for twelve firefighters. That gives you additional staffing, adequate staffing at a bare minimum. Thank you.
Good evening, Nathan Kaufman, eighty-four Westbrook Road. The mission statement on the town's website emphasizes the goal of protecting life, property, and the environment by delivering exceptional and progressive all-hazard emergency services, public education, and fire prevention programs. However, how can a fire department achieve this mission when it fails to meet the minimum requirements of NFPA seventeen ten? To clarify, NFPA seventeen ten mandates that sixteen personnel must arrive on scene for an initial alarm at a single-family residence, or seventeen if they're using an aerial apparatus. For apartments and open-air strip malls, requiring is twenty-seven members, or twenty-eight with an aerial apparatus. Additionally, each engine and truck must be staffed with a minimum of four personnel. Currently, the town has a total of thirty-six career members, including chiefs, the training officer, fire marshals, along with approximately twenty-five certified volunteer firefighters for interior firefighting. The career side operates with a shift strength of only seven firefighters, which is less than half of what NFPA seventeen ten requires to protect the town and its residents. Due to the shortage of manpower, the town has to call in mutual aid for even the smallest house fire. The fact that our town can't even handle a single-rooming contact fire should outrage you. To those who argue the presence of volunteer justifies our department only having thirty-six members, here's a reality check. It's widely acknowledged that there has been significant decline in volunteer services nationwide. Volunteers are unreliable asset for daily responses due to their job commitments and other obligations, and their response times within the town are proof of that. NFPA seventeen ten also includes specific response time requirements. Alarm answer, within fifteen seconds, ninety-five percent of the time, or forty seconds, ninety-nine percent of the time. Alarm processing, within sixty-four seconds, ninety-five percent of the time, or within a hundred and six seconds, ninety-nine percent of the time. Turnout, which is dispatch to the on-road time, within eighty seconds. First due engine arrival on scene, within four minutes, ninety percent of the time. Second due engine arrival on scene, within six minutes, ninety percent of the time. The fire department currently averages twelve minutes arrive on scene of an engine, which is eight minutes longer than what NFPA seventeen ten requires. Volunteers average twenty minutes for their first unit to arrive. Station Three currently operates on a limited schedule, and there are plans to close it completely, which would leave that side of town vulnerable with increased response times of eighteen to twenty minutes, a hundred percent of the time. The station needs to be open twenty-four seven. The town spans thirty-six point eight square miles and has a population of approximately forty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-three, according to the twenty twenty-three census. It includes major infrastructures like I-84. How do you, how do you find it acceptable to cover this area seventy-five percent of the time with one engine, one ladder truck, and a battalion chief car, all staffed by only seven firefighters in total? If they're lucky, maybe six. Do you understand how negligent that is? The, this severely compromises the fire department's ability to provide effective fire suppression and life safety services. With the current average response time of twelve minutes, fires can rapidly escalate, resulting in fully involved structures with minimal salvageability. If firefighters are already engaged on another call, the situation becomes even more dire. Moreover, with the closure of Station Three, the average response time is only going to increase further. The lack of support from the town for the, the fire department is a disgrace. The department is being forced to operate on skeleton crew and jangling both firefighters and residents. It wasn't long ago that two firefighters got disoriented and a May Day situation arose. Thankfully, they managed to get out safely, but it could have resulted in two on-duty deaths. The games you've been playing with the members of Local Twenty Thirty-Three have gone on, on long enough. It's time to get your act together and start supporting the people who have laid down their lives for you. You seem to take firefighters for granted, and you're walking a dangerously thin line. A serious incident where lives will be lost is imminent, it's not a matter of if, but when. If any lives are lost due to the lack of personnel or increased response times, the consequences will be severe, and you all will feel responsible. It's time to take this matter seriously and provide the necessary support to ensure safety of both firefighters and residents, and I expect more protection for my tax dollars. Thank you.
Regina Covielo, toll beacher street, one street away from that fire, I could see the house. I am here tonight in support of our local firefighters. When I heard that we almost lost two of them at the fire on Howard Avenue, I became scared. I, being disabled, would have had a hard time getting out and might have needed help. If this was the case, not only myself and my animals, two dogs, a rabbit and a mouse, but also those two firefighters, we may not have all needed trying to get me out of the house. We, as a town, have the responsibility to keep not only our residents, but our firefighters as safe as as safe as possible. I feel that it is mandatory that we increase firefighters' staffing. We have thirty-seven, excuse me, staffed firefighters, which is under the Connecticut State average of one point two eight per one thousand residents. Our population was at around forty-four thousand a few years ago and our population has and is growing. With that being said, my calculations with forty-four thousand residents should be fifty-six. We should at least have forty-four, one per every thousand. The average salary for a firefighter is between fifty-eight to seventy-one thousand a year. Farmington actually has a job listed right now for sixty-seven. All right, so we'll take that, sixty-seven thousand dollars divided by forty-four thousand of our population. That's only a dollar fifty-two per resident per year to have an extra firefighter. We can't go to the store and buy anything for that amount. There, there should be no reason, this town cannot come up with a way to get the money needed for additional firefighters. Standing here today myself, I myself will get fundraisers going if need be to get added firefighters. Like the saying goes, just do it. One last thing, this town has to be more careful with spending money. Soullington just paid two point one million dollars on the bank across from the green. That was double what the property was worth and never came to referendum. So if the town can do that, then they can hire more firefighters. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you so much for having this hearing. My name is Alexandra Dijonso Anderson, I live at six five-nine Prospect Street in Soullington, Connecticut. Today I'm here because firefighter safety is very important to me. In October twenty twenty-four, I was able to support quite a few members of Global Defense and Industry Coalition. And the goal of the organization is to go to the front lines of various military conflicts with new and enhanced technology and see what solutions work the best. And so for us, for Global Defense and Industry Coalition, that, one of the most critically watched items is drones. So we watch for drone utilization across the front lines. This includes fire extinguishment, it includes defense operations, monitoring civilian evac rescue operations. From coming back from the October and walking into this meeting, I want to make sure that for whatever budget discussions, whether they're operational or they're capital expenses, drone discussion should be present there. I will explain why. So using the situation that occurred at Howard Avenue, there should have been no question on whether or not to send physical people into that building. We have the technology in the United States that can send a ground robot. So that robot can provide all the information that there is to know about the conditions of the basement. So at that point, if we were able to invest in the capital expense rate to actually get that drone, you would have firefighters with zero presence inside the basement, completely safe. So for me, I think that some of the items on the checklist that should really be discussed is whether or not our town is willing to train our firefighters and invest in capital expenses from a completely different budget in drone technology. The drone technology recommended for fighters today include aerial reconnaissance and monitoring. It provides real-time aerial views of fire scenes to assess the situation and monitor fire speed. It includes thermal imaging, meaning that the drone can detect the source of the fire and tell, essentially guides, the firefighters to extinguish the fire at the source and treat everything else. Then there is search and rescue operations. You essentially send a drone into the building, it has flashing lights on it, and it has a speaker that's attached. It's telling people, follow me, evacuate, and leads people out this way. These, all of this technology is AI capable, meaning you can teach a drone what you want it to do. On the front lines in Ukraine and the city of Kharkiv, the firefighters do the following thing, they do not, while people are getting into the actual truck, the drone is already flying ahead. By the time the firefighters get to the actual scene, the commander or lieutenant or whoever is currently in charge and driving the drone program already have the intelligence on how to approach the scene before you even get to the scene. So that expedites both response times and it also increases the capacity of services that it offers. Then there is fire scene assessment, that's documentation. So it documents fire scenes and damage for investigation, specifically for residents, it has a lot of impact because it can be used for insurance purposes. Then, the most challenging portion is exposure to hazardous materials. When firefighters go into the building, we already know that within the industry, there is a very, very high risk of poisoning and all other combination of hazardous materials that the firefighters get exposed to that then catch up with them later on in life. So there is drones that specifically have capabilities to monitor for hazardous environments. There is a grant that is available at the federal level. This grant right now, it's, it's time for us to use it because if we in Soullington don't start it, next year you will have another hundred police departments that are fighting for the same money. That'll be the same situation with the smart grant program. It is currently available to firefighters. I'm asking you to please consider sending people to train. It is not coming out of taxpayer expenses, purely a federal grant. The expenses are just the drone equipment itself. And then lastly, there is a strategic plan that was put together in twenty twenty-two. That plan definitely needs updating to include the drone technology evolution in it. If that is something that the town wants to pursue, in twenty twenty-two is the year that we saw the evolution. I have a lot of resources that I've brought for myself. This is all yours, including models that are mostly liked within the firefighter community and then integration potentials with police departments. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my first name is Cabul Bosco. I live at one ten, um, place. A little bit personal background for myself. I have over twenty-six years of experience as a first responder, volunteering both fire and EMS. I worked through the ranks of EMS to become a paramedic and worked full-time at Bristol EMS. I'm currently the lead PA in the local ER, and I also oversee medical control for Bristol EMS, Bristol Fire, Bristol PD, Terryville Fire, and Burlington Fire. Which I don't know that I know, we'll talk about the Lucas. Some personal experience, I had a devastating fire in two thousand nine. I was at home, living with my parents, we lost everything. Luckily, my family was able to get out okay. I was born and raised in the town of Avon, a volunteer fire department. I volunteered in town and I know if we had a paid department, that devastating fire would have been minimal with everything that we lost. When I called nine-one-one that morning and reported to dispatch that black thick smoke and fire was in the house and I had evacuated my parents and my elderly grandmother. It took the fire department close to twenty minutes to arrive on.